I don't want to walk into the door of the bureau.
No, you have that.
Okay.
I take it.
All right. Where are you going now?
Fine, man.
Oh, the other guy.
Fine, great.
Okay. Now, call the meeting of the Carbon County Board of Commissioners. Please rise for a moment in silence, prayer and pledge of allegiance. Oh God, thank you for the gift of this new day and thank you for the blessings of this life. Family, friends, work and purpose. Guide us as we discuss, plan and dream together. Help us make wise and just decisions. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of constituting the accuracy of written minutes. Tapes are reused, eliminating recorded records of these proceedings. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held July 16th, 2020.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Showed me is not voting since I was absent last week. Are there any guests concerning county business at this time? Here, here none at this time. We have a special presentation from Catholic Charities and the Rent Relief Program. Chris, did you want to introduce our guests?
Yeah, I want to introduce from Catholic Charities both Rob Nicoletta and Heidi Mercado. I wondered if I could invite one of you maybe to come up here just to give a brief overview of the program, the role that Catholic Charities is playing in supporting Carbon County's rent relief program.
Sure.
How much time?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Yeah.
Catholic Charity.
You want to scoot over this way a little bit so they can see on the camera that we have.
Okay. Catholic Charities is a multi-service agency. We provide counseling services, immigration services. We provide rent assistance, utility assistance, case management services. We have a variety of different food programs. The rent program that is, is coming about right here is from state funds where the state of Pennsylvania has allocated through CARES funding, $175 million for the entire state. I don't know how much is specifically geared for Carbon County just yet. That is, that is still in process. So what is the rent relief program? Well, it's a form of way of helping those who are specifically, those who are renters who are specifically in need of rent assistance in order for them to be able to stave off an eviction. Now, there are some qualifiers. First of all, the governor of Pennsylvania has kind of put a moratorium on evictions. So, and that ends August 31st. The money is still available. The money is available for those specifically who have become either laid off because of COVID-19 as of March 1st, and therefore they have documentation verifying that they either are within the Department of Labor and Industry, that they have become unemployed, or they at least have a 30% reduction in their income because of COVID-19, again, starting from that March 1st start date. Thus, if they were employed full-time 40 hours a week, and maybe now they're employed 20 hours a week, that would be the deduction. There is numerous documents to be able to be provided. Three, as a matter of fact, two that are needed by the landlord, one that's needed by the renter. Now, the interesting thing about this, where a variety of our rent programs where in the past they have been kind of generated because evictions that the renter then is trying to stave off the eviction and therefore the landlord is kind of, in a sense, working in a secondary role. Because of the moratorium, and this is what's very interesting right now, because of the moratorium and there's no evictions taking place, the landlords are really kind of guiding the ship right now and they're the ones who are trying to get some income coming into maybe their mortgage involved with the rental property or whatnot. So it's a very interesting, the dynamic that's kind of playing itself out right now. We're sure that's going to change in a little bit, but as of right now, that's how things are playing itself out. We've had probably about, I'm going to say about between 15 applications so far within the first week or week and a half, and you know, it's starting to pick up. There's numerous people that are starting to generate more. There are reports that we've got to be able to provide. One actually is by next week and those are monthly and we are looking forward to it. There is an employee here, Heidi Mercado, who's specifically involved with this program. She's designated specifically with Carbon County, but because we are working remotely, if we have some difficulties or if the numbers do get high, we do have other caseworkers that can help remotely. So that's not necessarily going to be an issue.
Could you explain the process for someone that is in need of the rent assistance? How, who would they contact, phone number, webpage or whatever?
Sure. So you would contact Heidi, who is our caseworker server. Her email will be listed, but 610-435-1541 is our phone number for the agency. You would just simply ask for Heidi and Heidi would be able to, be able to assist from that aspect. There is ways of getting the documentation. If you go to phfa.org, you can get the, you can get the forms. You can get the forms through us Catholic Charities and we can be able to scan them. But any person can get the forms, go into phfa.org. You would download those forms, you'd start filling them out. You can simply ask Catholic Charities for the forms, we can get them to you. It's just quicker if you want to be able to. You send those forms in. Again, there's one documentation for the renter. There's two that are needed by the landlord. The landlord also needs to make an applicant. Those three need to come in together and there needs to be documentation regarding the person in order for them to be able to, to verify that they have become unemployed or they have a reduction in their income. And that's the eligibility essentially.
Any comments Heidi, or anything from you?
I think he explained it very well exactly. Everything that he said is exactly the process. It is quite a, like a long process, but really it's not. The criteria is pretty simple. You either qualify or you don't. It's there. Yep, I agree.
Personally, I want to thank Catholic Charities for taking on this grant process. It's not the easiest one to administer, I'd say. There's a lot of moving parts to it, but we really appreciate you stepping up and taking this project on for the county. And I know Catholic Charities has been with Carbon County on other projects for many, many years, long before I was here. And I know you're involved with other counties, so I want to thank you very much. And just because it says Catholic Charities.
Open to everyone.
Open to everyone. I'll point that out too. It's just that it's faith based and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
At this time, if you don't mind, Heidi from TD 39, if she has any questions. Do.
Could I actually talk to you after the meeting? Just so I can properly get the audio.
Dominic?
I actually interviewed him online about, I don't know, six weeks. I have done, I have the illusion of time right now. I spoke to you, I didn't recognize you. Hello, Rob, nice to see you again in person.
You're in the car.
Okay. Well, thank you, Rob. Thank you Heidi for being here today.
Report of executive sessions?
No, none.
Department reports of budget transfers?
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of payroll check numbers, 72543 through 72590 and direct deposit check numbers, 6021358 through 6021785 for the payroll paid through the payroll fine checking account for all county funds totaling $595,232.49. This is the payroll date of July 17th, 2020.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Approval of check numbers, 214550 through 214688 to the general fine clearing account totaling $795,766.50.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
The treasuries report?
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
The personnel report?
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed. Copies will be made available to the press upon request. Advertising. Authorize the advertisement relative to the location and time change of the remainder of the 2020 prison board meetings.
Thank you. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Children and youth. For approval, the third quarter fiscal year 2019-2020, Act 148 invoice report, which will result in the county receiving $4,899.77 in IT grant funds, $7,911.70 in special grant funds, $18,647.70 in Title 4A double A funds, and $104.41 in Medicaid funds and $10,075 in tanna funds.
Thank you. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Communications, 911. A request was received from the communications director for a proposal from Radio Maintenance Incorporated of Reading, Pennsylvania for EMS simulcast system under the Pennsylvania contract number 012-083 at a total cost of $298,386.27 with the payment terms as listed.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Planning and development, CDBG, change order number one to the contract with Barletta Materials and Construction Incorporated of Tomaco, Pennsylvania for street improvements, bridge, street, grade and sway system, East Side Borough fiscal year 2018. Due to changes in the contract, the cost was increased by $1,058.50 for a new total contract price of $105,881.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Section 504 plan. Request was received from the planning and development director for adoption and execution of the Carbon County Section 504 Plan dated July 2020.
Move to adopt and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Solicitors report?
Thank you. Agency on Aging, for approval and execution. Professional services agreement between Carbon County Agency on Aging and United Disability Services and the Disabilities Resource Center to partner together to perform the person-centered counseling effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2022. Agency on Aging has the fiduciary agent for the ADRC program office will pay the approved PCC personal, person-centered counseling units with ADRC funding.
I'll move. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Farmland preservation, for approval. Proposal submitted by Arthur A. Swallow Associates, professional land surveyors for survey services at the David L. and Brenda A. Rex Farm in Mahoning Township. Total estimate not to exceed $6,900.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Oakdale County's WIA, Monroe County, for approval and execution. Program Year 2020 Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Financial agreement commencing July 1, 2020, terminating June 30, 2021 for the employment, training and related administrative services between Carbon County as the administrative entity and Monroe County. The maximum payment shall not exceed $1,879,915.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Financial agreement for Pike County for approval and execution. The Program Year 2020 Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Financial agreement commencing July 1, 2020, terminating June 30, 2021 for employment, training and related administrative services between Carbon County as the administrative entity and Pike County. Maximum payment shall not exceed $719,544.
Thank you. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Financial agreement for Wayne County, for approval and execution. The Program Year 2020 Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Financial agreement commencing July 1, 2020 and terminating June 30, 2021 for employment, training and related administrative services between Carbon County as the administrative entity and workforce Wayne Incorporated of Wayne County. The maximum payment shall not exceed $514,260.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor? Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Recorder of deeds, for approval and execution. A memorandum of understanding between Carbon County for the Recorder of Deeds and Corporation Service Company of Wilmington, Delaware to receive electronic recorded submission of documents by the submitters. The submitters are responsible for the charge and are under contract with CSC until terminated by either party. There is no cost to the county. This is to permit e-filing in the office of the Recorder of Deeds.
Thank you. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Tax assessment, a tax refund for approval and payment. Communication received from the Tax Assessment Bureau verifying the following taxpayer is due a refund of county real estate taxes. Property in Lee Hyten Borough of Andrew and Judy Patterson. The taxpayers requesting refund due to a fire. The refund is based on 11-month prorated assessment with the total refund due of county taxes of $390.11.
Correction on that, I believe, would be in order. Why shouldn't that be Mahoning Township? It's listed as Lee Hyten Borough. It's actually in Mahoning Orioles Drive. I didn't notice that before the meeting.
I know that they own a property in downtown Lee Hyten. That's where the fire was. I think that's. I think the taxpayer address. Yes, but the, but the property is in Lee Hyten Borough.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks very much.
Move to approve and. Yeah. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
One more matter of ratification. The retainer agreement between the county for the Board of Elections and law firm Newman Williams and attorney Gerard Geiger of Stroudsburg for representing the county and the Board of Elections in two pending lawsuits. The one is in the Western District of Pennsylvania, Donald J. Trump for President et al. And the second one is in the Commonwealth Court Democratic State Committee. The attorney Geiger is representing not only Carbon but Wayne, Monroe, Pike and Snyder. So under the agreement, we will be paying one-fifth of the costs of the, in the defense of this matter.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Nothing further.
Any further business?
No further business. I'd just like to bring up that we received, we received some correspondence this week. I know people have been asking me about when the senior centers are opening. It was a request for our aging, area agency on aging to bring the senior center managers back. I believe it was next week or following week. And opening, that August 10th, I think, for the opening of the senior centers. I know a lot of the seniors have been asking that question. So we are officially moving forward on making that happen. Another thing I have is the Beltsville. I would like if the Board of Commissioners here would go on record supporting Hattley's efforts and supporting the state limiting the amount of people at Beltsville. I know it's a very difficult job for those police departments. The local volunteers that have to clean up after these people with such a mess. This past weekend, I heard our volunteer fire police being called out to direct traffic in this hot weather at no pay. They're suffering and the township, well, state police for commencing township, Franklin Township, which covers the rest of the territory. They have been extremely busy and all the volunteers cleaning up these people that have no regard for our environment and safety at Machunk Lake Park. And it's been reported that from several sources, I have heard now of a female or a couple with small children at the Pine Run Cove Bridge with children out on the pier. You know, and they, this past weekend, I believe it was Sunday, they had near drowning. I don't know all the details, but there was a dispatch to the picnic area for that where there is no swimming. So people have been taking total disregard for the safety or their own safety, let alone the safety and the environment of others around us. So even her hear of people out there on jet skis at night with no headlights or anything and creating a danger for other fishermen and boaters out on the lake at that time of day. So I would like if we go on record and maybe write a letter of support and even invite Governor Wolf to come to Beltsville on a Saturday and Sunday and witness firsthand what it's really like. What are people have to deal with in the mess that these people leave when they come visiting and without regard to anyone's safety. So it's really disgusting. I have no further comments on their further business.
Yeah, so to get on the record, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we formally prepare correspondence to the appropriate authorities identifying or highlighting the Board of Commissioners' concerns with the continuing deteriorating condition at Beltsville and the impact it has on the quality of life of county residents.
No, second now.
And I would like to make a comment about that also. I don't think for weeks this has been going on. And I said, we are very fortunate that there's a group at Beltsville that's a volunteer group that comes in there. I think like two weeks ago, they filled two dumpsters up. I mean, this is an issue like if parks even across the state do not have groups like this, it's costing the taxpayers money. I mean, they had five, six people in there and they filled two dumpsters up and they get rid of the garbage cost money. So I think something has to be done about it because we did stuff at our park and I think we have to protect not just our, our area, but the state of Pennsylvania.
Look at the pictures you see online and that of the parking lots where people leaving their garbage right where they, they parked their cars. It's just disgusting, you know? And I wish they'd be, we'd have the available place to arrest these people for littering and make them start paying for it. I know several cars have been towed. I don't know how many, but you know, I've heard a report of a car stolen. Well, you parked where you weren't supposed to. It was towed. Pay the fine, pay the recovery.
And that's another thing, like our Fish and Boat Commission, we have one officer. And I think he's off right, what, right now on, he was on sick leave and there's nobody. I mean, that's, I think, another area that they have to look at to get more deputies or whatever they have on staff to cover this. I mean, I don't even think we really have anybody covering the area right now. I don't have any report. I'll give a lengthy one.
We have a motion.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Honor, yes. Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
And I will have the lengthy one next week on how we're opening the courts and we're getting new folgers and things like that. So next week, I think Greg is going to do some kind of an interview with everybody with The Times News and Channel 13 and 39. And I don't, Greg, did you have anything picked out like what day at all? We were going to do this or?
Not yet.
Okay.
Because I've been coordinating your schedule.
Yeah.
Court availability.
Okay. Mr. Lukasewicz?
Yeah, two, I first and foremost want to emphasize on behalf of all the commissioners, reemphasize to the public that the COVID-19 relief, Carbon County Block Grant Program application period is currently taking place. That grant opportunity application period will run through, close the business on 31 July. Go to carboncounty.com. You can't miss the hyperlink to the application portal. If you are having any technical problems or unfamiliar with using the process that has been set in place, don't hesitate to call 570-325-3611. The block grant administration cell is prepared to help walk you through the process so you can get your applications in on a timely manner. We currently have 17 complete applications in valued at 1.254 million dollars. That's that program. In regards to Machunk Lake Park, want to invite the public out to Machunk Lake Park, of course, at every opportunity, but specifically for Carbon County residents, membership holders, campers and those who rent our picnic pavilions. Every Thursday at 2:00 PM, the teams at Machunk Lake Park and the Carbon County Environmental Educational Center have put together an opportunity to recreate, at the same time educate, where the CCEEC will be putting on static displays, bringing in some of the inhabitants of our local natural environment. And that started last Thursday and that'll run every Thursday through the 27th of August. That's all I have.
Yeah, a few things on the generally solving 504 grant. And that is a requirement for our planning and development for people with disability plans. And that's what the 504 grant is. Emergency plan for people with disabilities. The other thing I have to mention is we're moving along with our training center. Site prep is underway. I have a contract, I think, with about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars. That's clearing the trees, leveling the land, putting in retention ponds, putting in the piping, et cetera, for the hydrant system, future propane lines, electrical lines, et cetera. So we're well underway with that, probably two months into it, maybe three months already. We're working on finalizing the plans for the police training building and the fire burn tower and training props for the emergency services training center. and the fire burn tower and training props for the emergency services training center. It's gonna be about a, about a four, four and a half acre site. We are now in the process of doing a grant application for the RAC P grant. We just received it in email this morning, two hundred and seventy-eight pages. We have to review and update till tomorrow. I think they want it. Or next week it has to be finalized. But what we're working on right now is a letter of support. We are requesting all the municipalities, police department, EMS, and fire to all submit letters of support for this grant application for the completion of the training center. The final, or this phase of it, we're looking at about three and a half million dollars for completion. The county has obligated some, quite a bit of funds, over two million dollars towards that process. The axerice road, pretty well complete. We didn't put the final coat of black top on because of the future construction. That'll be included probably in the last phase. And so that widening of the road has been completed. Phase one B is well underway and the final phase of the construction, we're finalizing specs. Hopefully within the next couple of months, we'll be going out the bids on that. We're finalizing a retrofit usage and, you know, different things of that nature. So moving right along, again, I would ask our elected officials also for letters of support and all our units, vows, and emergency services. Been a long time coming. We started this project in two thousand eight. It really got a boost unfortunately in two thousand thirteen when our former drain facility had to be torn down because of deterioration, rusted sewer wells and blocks were cracking, et cetera. So, and that was not a burn building to begin with. This new facility will contain three burn rooms, at this time Class A, wood, paper, et cetera, straw, with heat sensors so we don't destroy the building. It has heat panels in those burn rooms, sixty-two feet high, I believe the tower will be four, three stories. So the place building will have movable walls for, our place departments have no place right now where they can go and do joint training programs on a regular basis to learn and work together, especially in today's society with all the things going on. And that, our police have got to start working together more often because if a major incident occurs in any of our municipalities, no one police department or all the county police departments, including state police, cannot handle it themselves. So the better trained they are, the more they get to work together, the more prepared we're gonna be for any possible emergencies. So that's all I have for now. So meeting adjourned. Dominic, I'll let you go first here.
Right. Three things. The first one is farmland preservation. Is this one of many parts of the property that we're trying to preserve? Is this like a?
Yeah, from what I understand, I don't, I don't recall uphand. We'd have to get the numbers for you and probably talk to Dave Bodnar in planning, how many farms we already have preserved, farmland preservation as far as, well, as forestry. But I understand there's quite a few applications right now. They have to meet a lot of the criteria, right types of soil. They can get reimbursed by the state and the county contributes to that program every year, which is fifty thousand dollars, I believe it is. Sure not enough in today's society on preserving the farms with population growth and other urban spread, you know, to rural areas. All our farms are disappearing. And it's gonna come a day when we're gonna have a food shortage. So the more property, farmland that we can preserve, the better off we'll be in the future.
And with the C D B G grant for East Side Borough Bridge, where exactly is that located?
East Side Borough. Wait, David, it almost in.
Well, I'm talking about this.
I'm not sure where that is exactly, Dominic. I don't know. I think they have it right there.
It's not too hard to find up there.
I can. I know it's. All right. That's it for me.
That's it for you. Haley?
Um, let's see. You had just mentioned the, that the senior centers will open. Is that a county decision? Do they, does the county?
Well, it was a recommendation. Basically, it's a county decision when we allow these people to come back for that reason. The senior, senior managers are all part-time people and they have been off since we have, well, I shouldn't say that. They were helping to deliver meals. They went on a very limited basis and continue to help us deliver meals right now. So they'll be coming back with more hours and to help manage the senior centers.
And they even developed like a plan. You know, I mean, like we looked at it. It looks like it's gonna be safe and workable for them. I think they're splitting it up like in two different shifts. Like if somebody, like if the morning group would come in, they'd take a lunch and take it with them. And then the second group would come in and eat the lunch there. So they, they have a plan. I mean, they had to give us a plan to make. I mean, we just can't have everybody, all of them in there at one time. But they came up with a pretty good plan. I mean, I think you should contact them on how they're doing it, you know? And that, and I said, I think they were gonna even extend the hours a little bit.
Yeah, Haley, I would just simply add, if, you know, you do any research, most, a matter of fact, there's a great article two days ago in the Wall Street Journal talking about health and relationship to our seniors and social isolation. What a negative impact that has. So I think this is a significant opportunity for us to again, help mitigate that risk of the adverse impacts of that. And again, I would highly recommend that Wall Street Journal, it'll give some additional insight.
The seniors as well, they're getting tired of sitting. They're not even able to get out there and enjoy themselves and see their friends, you know? They make so many friends over the years through the senior games in particular, not only from their senior centers, but when they get together in May, and we had to cancel it this year because of COVID. But they make a lot of great friends and continue these relationships, our friendships after the games are over. So I look forward to seeing each other each and every year. It does keep people active, keeps them healthy. And to me, it's one of the greatest things that the county can provide to our seniors.
That's it.
Okay, all right. Which one of you three missed me the most?
Probably you, Rob. I did not miss you. The mic just shot in the heart. Dominic, I talk about you every night. Where is he? Where is he? Did he leave our area? No, not yet, brother, not yet. Not for a while either, I'm sure.
You're gonna have to have a bridge street in East Side Borough.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't even, I saw East Side Borough. I was like, that is not familiar to me at all. Is that technically, is that technically Carbin County? It's just that far up. Well, wait, in Temacoque, they have a bridge, but you wouldn't even know it.
Well, you know what, like when you come out, like on, what is that? Is that nine forty there? What is that that comes all the way down? What is, what is that? But when you come down, there's, there's actually only one road. Maybe that's where it is. Maybe there's a border.
I'll be honest with you, I probably will not be making the drive up there, so consider it scratch.
Google it.
Yeah, that's all I'll do.
No, I missed you, Dominic.
I miss you guys too. Alyssa was taking a stranglehold on. I was getting mad last week. I told her I wanted to go. She goes, no, I'm coming. I say, hey, you gotta let me back into the boys room sometime, guys.